Give you the background, the substation out at the shops, which I have a picture of next, was offered up to us by the shops to have a presence out there. We used to have golf carts then, we used to have all kinds of bulky equipment, and it was a good partnership that started and led to a meeting with Ravi and I and discussions about trying to keep or keeping or making the shops the safest shopping center in Texas. That was how we discussed that. And it led to discussions about some fees and or what it might take to have a presence from HVPD and how many hours in a month's time and some other obligations that we agreed to and committed to over these last nine years. So we have a substation out there. It's small, but it's very functional for us. And they currently pay us $243,330 in fees for us to be out there and provide law enforcement services. It's a minimum of 280 hours a month with a lot of, if you had a chance to read the contract, I hopefully did, with a lot of exemptions or allowances for us to, if we can't meet that, for example, staffing requirements, if I can't meet it, I have a out for that. I'm not held hostage to those hours every single month. COVID hit us all pretty hard. That hurt us out there also. And some other, or if police services are needed and arrest of the city, even though I had, might have someone stationed out there, they're leaving to go provide services for the citizens. And that's all outlined in the contract. Last contracts, all the contracts, including the new contract, contains the same language. We've collected 1.975550 to date from them. Here is the substation location and a picture of the outside. We do use it for those obvious things. We keep equipment on site for our big events. It's our command center offsite if something would really go wrong out there. We have a facility to retreat to or operate out of, and the troops use it also. There's a bathroom inside there, so they go out there and eat their lunch or write reports or whatnot. Here's a breakdown of our monthly hours over the last three years, calendar years. This contract runs calendar versus fiscal. I would say it's very, very unique from, the shops have changed ownerships at least twice, maybe three times. Twice, Kevin? Twice for sure. And they tell me over this timeframe, we're one of the, if not the only ones, that they go, have gone longer on contract negotiations. Usually it's one year to one year, just the way they run their operations. So let's see, we have pretty good, pretty good months. Our average is well above what the contract requires. Here's our calls for service by category, and then we've broken down how many calls each year for that category we've responded out there. I figured that might be a question to say, what do you guys do out there? We have a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot. We also do self-initiated stuff also, so warrants, for example, on traffic stops if somebody's in there. Good? Highlights of the changes?
Actually, sorry, can you go back one real quick?
I hope so.
There's one that I noticed. The juvenile was down considerably from last year, actually year over year. Do you know why that is? Are they enforcing more rules with regards to juvenile, or is it the way that they've done some of the upgrades to the property itself?
You know, you could put them all on a sheet of paper, I'd like to say they all contributed to that, not just one factor. The construction out there definitely, even by not having the renovations in place, the construction created some havoc out there and eliminated some of those free spaces.
Cool.
Highlights of these changes. You know, what I didn't address earlier is, and maybe it's on another slide, but I just didn't see it quick enough, was our time that's required out there for 280 hours is by HVPD employees or HVPD members. And members were defined as uniform officers, my PSOs, my auxiliaries. So any of the time that any of them spend out there all counts towards it. Biggest change for these contracts are this contract is adding the FLOCK license plate readers that we have been, they've been installed for about a year, year and a half now, and any of the obligations associated with them. We've included an annual fee in this contract for the shops to pay for those for all future years. And then the annual fee to the city, we locked it in for the next three years at 230, 830, 60, to increase by 2% beginning year to 2028, 2029, and 2030. So it's hopefully a six-year contract. That would bring our expected contract revenue to almost $1.5 million. Questions?
Our fee this year's 243,330 in 2024?
Yes.
And then it's the same in 2025?
Correct.
Why didn't it go up?
Point blank, in our negotiations, that was what they wanted to pay. We agreed to, or I had the, I had the authority from the city manager to say, any money's better than no money. Point blank discussing any of our presence out at the shops, if you saw the calls for service, we're going to be there, no matter what. We're getting a huge bonus out of this.
I understand. I just would figure it would go up every year, at least 2%, like the contract.
A city, a security service would cost significantly less. So to, if we continue to raise our costs, our expected revenues, as we call them, to them, they weren't going to agree to it.
Anybody else have any questions?
I was gonna say, what's our, does that cover two officers effectively?
So if you want to hear the history on that, actually, when we were moving our staffing levels within a department, we were able to add two additional officers to the police department at that timeframe, which was huge for us, because if you, I don't expect you to remember my breakdown for the operational chart, but we have six officers assigned each shift now. If we didn't have those other two, two shifts would be short a body for each shift. So it added significant value. And again, we'd have to be there anyway. So it's a good, good, good problem to have, let's say.
Rhonda?
So I know back when everything was put together, there was cameras and everything around. Are they still in place? And does the police, like, have operational control or can see them?
So we have the opportunity. And you're going to cut me off? Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, no, if you want, if we want to have that discussion, we need to go into closed session.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that.
No, no, that's fine, if you want.
I have, I have additional information on three more slides that address some of those issues.
I just wanted to know if there was cameras and if they're watched. That's it. Is that confirmation?
I don't know. Is that?
Oh, that's it?
Are you talking about the FLOCK cameras or?
No, just like every place has cameras. Just, that was the whole big thing, is that you can see them everywhere and?
The city used to have cameras in place and needs to be monitored and dispatched, and they became antiquated. And when those things became so obsolete and expensive to repair, they weren't. Eventually, the shops took over that project. And I think if I'm, I wasn't here during, during the building of that process, but what I was led to believe was those cameras were almost proposed, obligated by the city to put in, in that whole contract agreement when they were building the place, just like a 360 agreement is part of one of the conditions. When it went away, the shops took over that, and they put in their own camera systems. They've gone through two different systems already.
Okay, that's all I just, I just wanted to know if they had their own system and that.
Yes.
And do they watch it, or do we watch it? That's it. That's all I?
Yes.
Okay.
We, both.
Okay.
We have the ability to log into their system.
I thought you were, I thought you wanted to know, like, the FLOCK information. And so if we do that, we need to go into closed session to do that. So if anybody wants information on FLOCK, then we will, because we have it where we can do that. But if that's?
If that's to its extent, that's pretty easy.
No, I just wanted to know if cameras worked. Sorry, I didn't mean to stir that one up.
I was looking forward to it, to really.
I just finished watching CSI, so everything is under cameras, so I just wanted to ask.
Just know there's cameras everywhere.
Is the substation accessible to the public if they need to come in for any purpose?
There's a ramp on it. There's some ramps to get up to it. There's some limited parking just for, very close. We've interviewed people out there, victims, witnesses. We've take, you know, from, take them over to the shops.
They're manned, so it's manned all the time?
No, it's not. It's more of a, it's more of a proactive for us to be there and for, we open the door up, have people come see us when we're there and whatnot.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
911 is the fastest way to get us.
That's the fastest way, yes, for sure.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, Chief, well?
Great. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you.
Mayor, I do just want to mention that this is an action item on the agenda later on for approval.
Right. And if anybody wanted to move that action item to consent, we could do that if the council wanted to do that. So just keep that in mind.
Before that leaves, I just want to also add, Ms. Hurst had asked a few different questions or wanted the information. The only thing not covered was the breakdown specifically between auxiliary, PSOs, and officers. That would be for three years to pull every month and try and?
I didn't ask for that.
That's what was in the notes that our secretary took. So, but the rest of, but you asked for the hours and things like that.
Yeah, I was just asking for like the hours. I didn't meant the, or whatever. I just wanted to see the hours per month. Sorry, I didn't mean to, again, obviously, it's stepping it Tuesday for Rhonda.
Be thorough with our information.
I know. I just wanted to see, just to kind of see if it charted. That's all.
And it looks pretty good.
Monitor is right where I can't see Paul. So if Paul, if you're waving or trying to get my attention, you're going to need to, yeah, you're going to have to stand up.
Have a flag.
Okay. Yeah, raise a flag.
Like ponchos, man.
Can't see anything.
Those aren't bulletproof, by the way.
All right. Well, we're going to go to number two, receive an update on Upper Trinity Regional Water District wholesale pass-through rate. Ken?
Mayor, Council, another item that we discussed in the budget process that we were going to look to update our wholesale rates. Basically, our rate structure is bifocal, where we have a pass-through element for the Upper Trinity, because that's roughly 50% of our expenditure, so it's a significant cost for us. And then our city rates. City rates, we haven't updated in over 10 years, and they're still sufficient and good. But Upper Trinity, they, we get new rates every year, and we anticipate those. So it's set up to be, you know, it's a pure pass-through intent. And we do do an analysis of it every year and look at it, but we're not real rigid to actually up, change them every year. We do that periodically as needed. We try to, over time, kind of keep where we need to be, because it's always best. I guess I learned a long time ago, changing utility rates or any component of it is not usually well received. So we just do it when we really have to. But this year, we had some increases. Actually, the last couple of years, we've had increases on the water side. It went from $1.49 per thousand gallons to $1.56. This is roughly $57,000 increase. Last year, the year before, it went from $1.40 to $1.49. So over two years, we've had a pretty good little increase there in the wholesale demand, demand charge we pay. Now, we have three MGD subscriptions, so we have a charge for each MGD that we subscribe to, and it went up 117,000. So that's another 8% increase. However, on the sewer side, that's kind of held steady the last couple of years. It's a small increase in the volume rate. Actually, the fixed component of that actually decreased a little bit this year. So when we do our look, each year, we have our projected, you know, based on a rolling average of actual data that you use to normalize data, basically what our usage is per household. And we update that every year when we do our forecast. So we have a projected usage or some, what we're going to buy from an Upper Trinity. So we project our billing. Along with that, you know, we have the cost, again, based on our projected usage. And then we come up with a variance from that. When we do, this is actually from true effort 2024. So as you can see, that we've underbilled our water because those rates have increased. And then the sewer, since they've stayed the same, you know, we've kind of gotten ahead. So in total, it looks pretty good, 56,000. That's kind of where we want to be, somewhere in that ballpark. But it's just skewed a little bit from one to the other. So over time, we want to get that right. So we're proposing to adjust those. We're, in essence, we're going to increase our water, $2 for the demand side of that. So that's a fixed charge. And then the volume, just a slight increase for that. But we're going to also propose to decrease our sewer by $3 on that side. So when you really take a look at it, it kind of evens that out where we have a 46,000 projected. You know, again, that depends on, you know, our demand and weather. And some years when we have flooding, we have a big increase in our sewer affluence. So we can't predict all those things. So this is all based on what we expect. And so by making these changes, it really works out to where pretty well needs to be with that. So far as an average bill, is really going to be not much, any change at all. A slight decrease for a typical usage. You know, when we get into the irrigation months, and you're using more water, you may have a $3 to $4 increase for higher usage. So this is a relatively neutral change in our wholesale rates. But, you know, looking forward, you know, they're going to increase over time. But generally, we've done pretty well with that. I've been kind of keeping track since 2008, when we started this. And today, we're actually, we've underbilled in total by about 125,000. And that is really related to a really, couple years of really nasty increases on the sewer side with, when we've had severe flooding. So because of that, we didn't opt to just dramatically increase our rates to cover that. So we've just kind of, over time, let it recover in little by little. So we're actually, we've done pretty well with that. So that's for you tonight. Yeah, it's informational. We'll make the change on the December billing going forward. And then we will do the same exercise next year about this time. Any questions?
We won't, Ken.
Correct.
Unless you've got something that you would like to.
No, nothing.
Like we were talking about earlier. Yeah. Okay. Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
Are these charges across the board, residential and commercial?
Yes. Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Counsel, that, now we're going to do clarification of consent or action items listed on today's city council meeting. Does anybody have anything that they would like clarified? I think maybe Paul or Scott or somebody, number 20 and 21, you want to just give us an explanation?
I think it fills more details, but if you'll notice in the report, we only got one bid on each one. Both of those bids were much higher than anticipated. So with the Barden Public Works project, we'll go back at the bid early part of next year. Could have been a timing issue with contractors, who knows? I believe with the gatehouse, we're looking at doing a construction manager risk proposal, as opposed to the regular bid. We think for a project like that, that would likely work much better. We can give more information if you'd like.
Are we looking at a scope modification in those, or is it just a rebid because we didn't get the responses that we were expecting?
I can speak for Pilot Knoll, but yes, there will be not necessarily a scope with the gatehouse and the construction and design documents. It's more about adding all the other things that are at Pilot Knoll and packaging it as one project, so that it would be the cabins, the day-use area, the restroom, renovations in the campground, and then also adding the work that will be at the boat ramp area. So it will provide a significantly larger project.
I guess, same question as the, for the dredging, I mean, that one was four times what we had estimated, so.
Right. We're not, we're not going to change the scope. We're going to stick with the engineer's cost estimate and rebid it. I think this bidder was an out-of-state bidder looking for a Christmas present we'll put in.
Okay. So are we still hopeful that we can hit the budgeted amount?
According to the engineer, it's, he's, he's on, he's on target with his costs.
So it's really a timing? Do you think it's really a timing?
It was probably a timing issue.
The dredging, is it just what's underneath? Is there anything going to be done? I haven't looked at it. I don't know if there's anything on top, especially the quell coke, because that's in our neighborhood.
Both the ponds would be brought back to original condition with a four-foot bench in, well, I'm sorry, an eight-foot bench and then four-foot depth.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, does anybody else have any questions?
I was just going to suggest we move items 20, 21, and 23 from action to consent.
Okay, if that's agreeable with Counsel, just shake your head.
That's good.
Okay. All right. So at that time, when we get to that point, we can, we can do that. You want to, since we have time, do you want to do, have an explanation of 18 and 19? Paul or?
We certainly can, if you'd like.
Yeah.
I'd call in Ken to do that.
Ken?
We have to get his.
Just so everybody's clear of what, yeah, because I think 18 ties to 19 and?
It does, yes.
Yeah.
We're just going to move everything into consent tonight.
No, we're not moving to consent. We're just clarifying.
Getting close.
You know, there is a record of 17 minutes, I think, on the council meeting.
That was Mike Lombardo.
Yep, 17 minutes.
Oh, don't even. Don't even. Don't even dare me on that one, okay?
Santa hat's growing.
We'll have to make sure that everybody that's participating in the meeting tonight talks really fast.
Yeah.
Ken, if you'll just give, just an explanation.
Yeah, budget amendment. Last year, when we had our 4B meeting, we presented a supplemental for splash pad improvements. And it was a two-year program that we talked about, 75,000 for this, this budget year, and then 50,000 for next year. And so that was passed by the 4B, brought forward to council. And in that discussion, Mr. Kicksmiller suggested that, hey, why don't we, we have the money for it, why don't we just move that second year up and just do it all as one project and get everything done at once, which was a great idea. However, 4B had already proved the other. And so, given the constraints of the timeframe, budget calendar, we didn't really have a chance to reconvene the 4B. So we just instead intended, when we got to that point where we're ready to do that, we would come back with a budget amendment. We did have a 4B meeting this last week, and that was brought forward. They approved the additional 50,000. So now, in turn, it's submitted to council for approval as a budget amendment. And then that's actually an action item tonight as well. We had one additional thing for the fireworks that we originally scheduled for Celebrate Toddland Village last year. It was rained out. We paid a $12,000 depositably. And that was good if we did the fireworks display that current year. So we then decided to do that with a fallen officer event. And with that, the additional 40, how much was it? 50,000? No, 18,000. We spent, however, it crossed over into the next budget year. So, so that money was appropriated last year, wasn't spent, went in the fund balance. We're pulling it back out, re-appropriating for this year, and just to keep that all straight. So those are the two proposed amendments tonight.
Okay. All right. Counsel, does anybody else have any questions? Any other? Nope. Clarification?
I have questions, but not, I'll take it offline.
Okay.
That's on the deal with the agenda.
All right. Okay. Well, then if we're not going to meet in closed session for anything, then we are adjourned at 6:30. We'll meet back up at 7 o'clock. We'll meet back up at 7 o'clock.
Welcome to Highland Village City Council Meeting. Today is December the 10th. It is 7:00 PM. Can I call this meeting to order? Whoa, oh, time out. Start all that all over. Got to turn my microphone on. And they got me a new microphone. I look like Madonna again. Look at there. Okay, let's start that over. Today is December the 10th. It is 7:00 PM. Can call the meeting to order and let the record show all council members are present. And tonight I get the pleasure of leading in the prayer. So please bow your heads and pray with me, please. Most gracious heavenly Father, as we gather during this special season of hope and joy, we thank you for the many blessings you have poured upon our community. Guide our hearts and minds as we work together to serve the people of Highland Village with wisdom, unity, and compassion. We ask your protection over our police officers, firefighters, and all first responders who work tirelessly to keep us safe. Watch over our military members, both near and far, and bless their families during this season of giving. May they feel our gratitude and your divine presence. Bless our residents, families, and neighbors with peace, health, and happiness during this Christmas time and the year ahead. May the Spirit of Christmas inspire us all to love, give, and serve with grace. Thank you for loving us.
Members are present and tonight I get the pleasure of leading in the prayer. So please bow your heads and pray with me, please. Most gracious heavenly father, as we gather during this special season of hope and joy, we thank you for the many blessings you have poured upon our community. Guide our hearts and minds as we work together to serve the people of Highland Village with wisdom, unity, and compassion. We ask your protection over our police officers, firefighters, and all first responders who work tirelessly to keep us safe. Watch over our military members, both near and far, and bless their families during this season of giving. May they feel our gratitude and your divine presence. Bless our residents, families, and neighbors with peace, health, and happiness in this Christmas, during this Christmas time and the year ahead. May the spirit of Christmas inspire us all to love, give, and serve with grace. Thank you for loving us. Thank you for forgiving us. In your holy name I pray. Amen. Thank you. Now, please stand for the pledges. Oh, sorry, Kevin.
Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. So next, we are going to have mayor of community interest. This council, does anyone have anything that they would like to say? Okay, well, if you don't, I do. So I just would like to make a statement, just as the mayor, so as the mayor of Highland Village. I am deeply saddened by the recent announcement of the Highland Village Elementary closure. Highland Village Elementary has been more than just a school. It's been a cornerstone of our community, shaping young minds, fostering lifelong friendships, and creating countless cherished memories for generations. Its impact on our city's families and children is immeasurable, and this decision is heartbreaking for so many of us who hold Highland Village Elementary close to our hearts. Please know that I am committed to working with our residents, educators, and local leaders to honor Highland Village Elementary's legacy and ensure that the needs of our families and students remain a top priority. While this chapter may be ending, the spirit and traditions of Highland Village Elementary will live on in the hearts of our community. We are biking strong, and together we will navigate this difficult time while honoring the legacy of Highland Village Elementary. Let's support one another and celebrate the incredible history of this beloved school. So I just want to just make that statement. I know that probably everyone knows at this point that the school board did meet last night, and they did vote to close five elementary schools in LISD, and Highland Village Elementary is one of those schools. So it is definitely near and dear to my heart. My son went to elementary school there. My grandchildren's granddaughters, my grandangels, went to Highland Village Elementary. So I just wanted to make that statement from, from the dice as your mayor. Okay, we're going to move on to, we have a couple of presentations. Tonight, we're going to do a check presentation to the Texas Police Chiefs Association for proceeds received from the Highland Village, Texas Fallen PD Tribute Event. And Chief Rhyme.
Mayor, this is one of those great nights to, to be very proud to be the chief in the city here. You know, I get choked up over this stuff all the time, but it really good. Barbara Childress was not able to make it tonight, but we are blessed and very honored to have three members from the Texas Police Chief Association here. The executive director, Gene Ellis, and his wife, Carrie Ellis, the vice president, and the current Texas Police Chief President here. Barbara is the chair, chair president for the foundation, and it's just great to have them here to, to be part of this celebration. Of course, everybody in the back needs to be recognized because they were part of it in some way. I wish we could, as an organization, get all of us here present for it, but life just doesn't afford that with 24/7 operations. So it was a pretty good year. I'm going to say that with tongue in cheek, pretty good year. It was our best year, but pretty good year. I'm finished speaking. We're going to watch a video, and then we'll ask Trevor Barnes to come up and, and give it little, he's going to have a couple of words to say also after the video. So, ready?
Perfect.
Lori?
Wow. That was great.
If you didn't see that amount, 99, 105, 70, I think is what it was. That's, raise was probably incorrect on that. I believe it was after we paid our bills. So it was over $100,000 and a tribute to this community and some great sponsors. Anna Borland, Local Pint, and Phil, also with Local Pint, and then the tremendous amount of the rest of the volunteers or, or donors here in the city who got involved again this year. Lori has that full list, but we can't thank them enough. So, that being said, Trevor Barnes, Texas Police Chief, current president, could you come up and, and address council, please?
Hello. Thank you all very much for having us today. As he said, I'm Trevor Barnes, the chief of police in Clyde, Texas. Also, I'm the president currently for Texas Police Chief Association. More accurately, this money actually goes towards our foundation. 100% of it goes towards our foundation. Our foundation provides a death benefit to the, to the survivors of police officers that pass away in the line of duty, and that benefit is given to them between 24 and 48 hours immediately following the death. And unfortunately, as of this today, we have had our 21st officer in Texas that has passed away in the line of duty. And the gentleman in the back, his name is, his name is Gene Ellis. Gene Ellis is executive director. So every time that this happens, Gene Ellis gets the phone call, and his staff makes that, that transaction happen, and it happens unfortunately 21 times just to 2024. So I would appreciate all the work that Gene and his staff do to make all that work. But I know that you guys could have given this money to anybody, let's, let's be honest, but we do appreciate very much Chief Rhyme and his obvious, his team that has done all the work. We do appreciate the money, and it does 100% go to some very, very good families that really are having a rough time. It's unlike many others that they get after fallen officers, after the officer passes away. It's unlike the rest of them because we don't ask questions. We don't wait, wait for death certificates. We don't wait for anything. We get the phone call from the chief, and, and it happens within a matter of 24, 48 hours from Austin to our regional director. So thank you, thank you, Chief Rhyme. Thank you all of you guys and all the, all the staff in the back that has worked their butts off to make this happen. We very much so appreciate it. Thank you, and bottom of our hearts, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
I just need to correct one thing. I don't have to work that hard for this. It's everybody in the back that does it and the citizens here. I just got to show up and look pretty, right?
Right.
Yes. Kidding, kidding, kidding. So that being said, if I could get everybody involved, everybody who wants them to be in the picture in the check presentation, please come up front. Lori's going to try and get all our pictures in there. And, and I don't want to forget council. All of you have been tremendous with that support and bringing people, bringing, supporting that event, obviously, supporting the community more, and the police department more ways than I could even imaginable say in, in this short period of time. So I would really like to have a couple of pictures done and have all of you present in at least one of those pictures, too. So either first or second, your choice.
Come on, guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's.
We don't need to trap the new money, Brian.
Oh, Kevin. Here, we'll stand up here. Kevin, stand up here. You stand on the back so you don't have to go down. Okay?
Don't let him fall off the edge now.
I'm not. I guess I need to take this off.
You turn sideways, you get a little more form room in there. As I say, you got to see your face. If you can't see.
Wait, can you get closer?
I'll squeeze in. Come on, we all love each other. Ben, he's touching me.
Yes. Well, Andrew's coming out, you know, again, you forget so many people who are involved in this. This is a city event now. The city event means that most of the departments, all of them are involved in some capacity. Lori and Andrew from, from our marketing division, absolutely amazing for pushing out all the, all the information. Parks, Phil, Phil's still not here, but his crew, again, they worked so many hours in there getting ready for their bridge, winding up the bridge, plus Doubletree Ranch, Christmas in the, in the ranch this Saturday. There's just not enough time in the day to do all these things, but it's a citywide event. And again, thank you, thank you. Okay, Jim.
Smart city.
What's the matter?
Uh-oh.
Okay. Did you get it? Okay. And so next, we have a recognition of Friends of Highland Village Park Foundation for the rec, for the rest, right, for, let's start that over. Recognition of Friends of Highland Village Park Foundation for the reforestation work at Doubletree Ranch Park and Unity Park.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yeah, this is, I have the privilege of presenting the presentation, and actually, the founder, Kevin Fenderson, is not able to be here tonight. So I'm going to do this in his absence, and I've got some other board members here that are going to help me with this presentation. So the background is the foundation's beginnings and meetings with myself and several other community leaders to see what could be done, what could be imagined. And this, on January the 10th, 2022 Incorporated, the Friends of Highland Village Park Foundation, and on April the 22nd, or excuse me, April of 2022 First Arbor Day Proclamation and Tree Planting Event happened. So the background is the board, Kevin Fenderson is the president, Dave Rush is the chair, Hogan Heathington is the director right here, and Tammy Gere is a director. She's our certified arborist, are the certified arborists with the group. And then honorary advisors is Diane Costa, former Highland Village mayor. And I believe also Mayor Wilcox, too. Yeah, I'm glad I remember that. She was left off of here, so forgive me for that.
That's okay.
And then the areas of focus for the Friends of Highland Village Park Foundation is trees and supporting the city's free reforestation efforts and events, support like organizing national and Texas Arbor Day celebrations. And a little background with this, in Parks Board, we actually had a, a tree reforestation initiative that was put forth. Didn't really know how we were going to fund it, but at the end of the day, the Parks Foundation took that on, and we were very happy to be able to partner with them. So also, another area of focus is playgrounds, which is the acquisition installation of accessible and sensory play equipment. And then capital improvements, education, preservation of landmark trees, and legacy programs to support memorial. I always have trouble with that word. If someone can help me with that, bequeaths? Okay, to invest in the next generation of Highland Village open space that make our community a special place. So this, this foundation is focused on all things Highland Village when it comes to parks and recreation and the beautification of Highland Village. It's a, it's a beautiful organization. I enjoy working with them. So projects include Doubletree Ranch Project, where they have had three events there. Eight trees were planted and donated to the city totaling $1,600. And here's some photos here of those events. The other one here recently, which I'm sure the council is aware of this, but the Unity Park, where we planted 12, 12 trees were planted, and the foundation donated six to the city totaling $2,376. This is probably their signature event to date and moving forward. They've got some initiatives, hopefully, that are going to produce more large-scale tree plantings like this. So the environmental impact that has had with 20 trees planted to date, approximately 960 pounds of carbon dioxide absorbed per year because of those plantings, that's a good thing. And then looking into the future, I'm going to bring a board member up here to talk about these. So which one of you three wants to do it? Yep.
Twist my arm.
Yep.
Good evening, council. It's good to see all of you. Hogan Heathington, longtime board member, as you can see, also on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board here with the city, and I thank you guys for the opportunity to be able to serve the community in multiple capacities. So the things that we have going on for our foundation is we're really focused on planning more tree events throughout the year. As a lot of people don't know, Texas Arbor Day is the first Friday every November, and that is the best time to plant a tree in Texas. So we used to do events in April, then we realized the trees have a tough time going through the summer, so we should probably plant during the fall when they have a better chance of surviving through the winter and growing in the spring. So our big thing is Texas Arbor Day. That's when we're going to be doing our planting events. Also, projects, National Arbor Day is in April, because that works for a lot of places that aren't Texas. So we are going to make sure that we work with the city and with Mayor Wilcox, I believe, this next year, to try and do an initiative where you guys, we have an event where we tell people about National Arbor Day, we get people interested in trees, and then we hopefully work with the city to get a proclamation for Arbor Day for the city. It's just something we like to do to keep people knowing that we are here and that we're here for the trees and that the city also cares about the trees in, in the city. We're also working on planning fundraisers and working on applying for grants and having events for those fundraisers. So there are a lot of grants out there that provide a lot of money to different foundations and to different organizations that focus on funding Parks and Rec activities, specifically tree planting. And there's a lot of cities around here next to us, Flower Mound, Lewisville, Denton, who get a large chunk of that money by applying to things like this every year. And we're going to be working to try and perform those grants on our, on our side for the city's behalf so that we can try and get some of that money to potentially give back on our November planting events. And then the fundraising events, we want to make sure that we're doing unique events, things that are driving people getting out into nature and being involved in the community so that we can continue to get more funds to plant more trees every year because that's what it's all about, is planting more trees, getting more people out in our parks and our spaces, and making sure that we have nature for decades to come for the future generations. And then lastly, building community awareness of the foundation. We're only two years old, working on three. We still have a long way to go with growth. As you can see, us four members, hopefully, we'll be able to turn that into dozens of people and eventually more as we go forward. And this is really a wonderful opportunity that we're very thankful for the Parks and Rec team here with the city, and also you guys on city council for allowing us to partner with you on such a large event to get these 12 trees planted in Unity Park. We're really excited for the future. We think that this is just a wonderful opportunity to continue engaging the community and making sure that we have those green spaces, because Highland Village is a very unique community. You don't see many places like it. Right next to the lake, tons of nature. Wichita Forest is a section that we're lucky to have from the core, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, and we continue to have that. So, thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you.
And I think, are you done, Phil?
And this concludes the PowerPoint presentation of this, but yes.
Well, I have a certificate, so I'd like for y'all to come up. No, all of you. Oh, this is, this is a picture opportunity. So, so the certificate is just Friends of the Highland Village Park Foundation and recognition for your outstanding contributions for reforestation. You have problems with the quest, I had that one. Project in Doubletree Ranch Park and Unity Park.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all for your work.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank y'all for everything that you do. We appreciate it. Okay.
Okay, here.
There you go.
There you go. Jeez.
Not yet. Oh, she didn't give us any warning.
All right. Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here. Merry Christmas to y'all. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to move on to city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens?
Mayor, I've got a couple of announcements. First, with it being the Christmas season, we have our signature Christmas, Christmas events happening this month. First, this Saturday, Christmas at the ranch at Doubletree Ranch Park, and it'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The event features Santa's workshop, reindeer, snow hill sledding, trackless train, bounce houses, and food vendors. The fire department will take Santa through our neighborhoods beginning on December 15th and ending on December 20th between 6:00 p.m. and 8:30 p.m. You can see when Santa will be in your neighborhood and follow his progress each evening with the Santa tracker, and that can be found at highlandvillage.org/santa. And just a reminder, city offices will be closed for Christmas on December 24th and 25th, and for New Year's on January 1st. Trash pickup on Wednesday, December 25th and Wednesday, January 1st will be delayed one day. So that means Wednesday's pickup will be moved to Thursday, Thursday's will be moved to Friday, and Friday's pickup will be moved to Saturday. Also, our comprehensive plan and recent survey have shown our residents' desire for activities for the teen community. To that end, last week, the Parks and Recreation Department held a teen focus group together, event ideas from the teens in our community. We had a great turnout with about 20 teens present, and we have a short recap video of that followed by the wrap it up in HV video.
Perfect. Thank you. Oh, you better make it quick before she turns the video on.
Oh, real quick, our toy drive's still going on till Sunday this week. So if you missed the joint fire department, police department toy drop in the, in the fire department garage, find one of our locations at Walgreens or Walmart before Sunday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Is the kettle campaign still going online?
It is.
So is there a way for people to go online? Can we direct them somewhere to get them to, so we can win?
There's a QR code. I don't know how we, I mean, I share it on social media, but I don't know.
It's on the website.
It's on the website also? Okay. So there's a QR code for our mayoral challenge for the Salvation Army Red Kettle Campaign, so you can use the QR code and donate so that we win.
And who are we competing against?
I want to win. All the surrounding cities, but most importantly, Flower Mound and Lewisville. But they've even taken it and expanded it across the, the lake, so Hickory Creek and Lake Dull, all of them. I know. But we want to beat Lewisville and Flower Mound, so, because we're competitive. So if you, so feel the need to donate, please use the QR code and, and it'll take you, if the one on the city website, will take you straight to my donation. Not to me, to Salvation Army. But to the Salvation Army in my name. Okay, okay, now, we're ready.
I'm tailored with experience Highland. I'm tailored with experience Highland Village. I can wrap up my entire holiday shopping list, give gifts that everyone will love, and even buy a fingernail for myself, all without leaving Highland Village. Gift cards from Studio 360 Med Spa are the gifts of the season, especially for me and my friends. When you have picky gift recipients, personalized gifts are the way to go. My friends will think I planned this all year. Even the family pets get spoiled this year. Chugging sessions in vacantness, they'll be living their best life in 2025. Holiday gift exchange season upon us. Tallulah's party prom and gift has all the right outfits for that New Year's Eve toast. For my adventure-loving friends, how about a virtual game of golf? Or zombie dodgeball? I have my eye on something blingy, and Nasser Brothers Jewelry has the perfect items for my wish list. From watches to diamonds and carrots galore, I can find it all at Nasser Brothers Jewelers. After all the holiday shopping, who wants to cook? I stop by awesome Time for some of their signature tater tots, and dinner's done.
Okay, now we're good. Now we're going to do visitor comments. I can't see. I think we have a visitor comment. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so visitor comments, anyone that wants to address city council must complete the speaker's form, request form, and return it to city secretary. And please note that when you come up, you state your name and your address for the record, and know that we can't comment, take up anything, because it's not on the agenda for business. But tonight, we have Matt Ensland.
You guys hear me?
Okay.
All right, good evening. It's an easier group to speak in front of than last night. Thank you for your talk through earlier. I appreciate that. Matt Ensland, 523 Doubletree here in Highland Village. I'm going to read through this, so don't forget anything. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for involvement in the Highland Village Elementary conversations and attendance at the listening to her in last night's board meeting. If you didn't know, the level of applause the mayor Wilcox incited at the listening to her, got the whole 600-plus or minus people in attendance scalded for applauding too much. Um, well... much, whereas they couldn't hear names after the applause. So I don't know if you were still there when they did that. It was like three or four people after you.
Oh, sorry.
You started it. But let's see here. Yeah, despite the board voting last night to close HVE six to one, it was a battle worth fighting, and your support means the world to the residents who value HVE and the school staff. Obviously, the building will remain in the LISD's control as long as they own the property. I do want to express concern for possible vacant building in the middle of East Highland Village. I think we all share that, that will require more surveillance than an occupied building would. Past that, my concern goes to what eventually happens with the property. It's among the two most physically connected and walkable elementary schools in the surrounding community in the LISD. I know because I studied all 40 elementary schools, and I put it in a diagram. I provided this diagram to the board, and I explained its physical connection to its surroundings, make it much more of a loss to the district than the board was really willing to consider. I emailed this diagram to you all, just so you have it, so it's in your inboxes, so you know what I'm talking about. I kind of squared the three Highland Village schools, just kind of an interesting diagram to look at. Nothing I refer to in depth here, but so you know what I'm talking about. A little bit of background on me, I don't think I said this last time I spoke. I'm an architectural project manager. I specialize in hospitals and the impacts my clients have on their surrounding communities. So this is why this is so interesting to me, and kind of why I went down this community pathway. Should this property cease to exist as an LISD building or a school of some type and become available for repurposing or redevelopment, therefore becoming a zoning item, I'm just going to state it that, albeit my professional experience is adjacent to this, it's water I'm only partially familiar with, I do want to be involved in what occurs to the heart of East Highland Village, and I'll keep track of this public information on this. But I'm leaning on you all to tell me where my experience can best be applied, to make sure that the heart of our community is well-cared-for. Whatever that means, even if it means we work together and encourage the next owner of the property to treat it with the utmost care and be sensitive to the property's unique level of access from its surroundings. The next two concerns are related to impending traffic along Briar Hill Boulevard by McAuliffe and entering Heritage, and the notorious 407 and Barnett Lane intersection. I think everybody here probably knows what I'm talking about. And I just have a question for you. I know you can't answer it right now, but just generally speaking, when can I and other citizens, what can I and other citizens do to heavily encourage the state to again consider a light here? Let me know. The safety of our kids, their families, and teachers is paramount. We encouraged the LISD to conduct a traffic study in these areas, but they did not see the value in that until after they made a decision, and they were very clear on that. So I'm going to be in touch with them, encouraging those studies for anything else they can do to kind of assist with that. And then lastly, thank you for your time tonight, and let me know if and when you want to talk further on this. Again, thank you for the support of our school while it still houses its students and teachers. They're all going through so much emotion and uncertainty right now. Drop-off this morning was quite somber, I'll be honest, and they can use all the support the community and our leaders can offer. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for coming out tonight. Okay, council, we're going to go to consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Council, would anybody like to move anything off of or to the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to move items 20, 21, and 23 from action to the consent agenda.
Okay. And council, is everybody okay with that? Okay? All right, so the, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda is number 11, consider approval of minutes of regular city council meeting held on October 22nd, 2024. Consider ordinance 2024-1318, amending Chapter 22 Utilities, Article 22.06, Drainage Utilities, Section 22.06.003, monthly charges established by the city code of ordinances by amending the charges to be levied for drainage services. That's the second and final read. Number 13, consider resolution 2024-3158, authorizing execution of the Texas Settlement Subdivision Participation and Release Form regarding the Kroger-Texas opioid settlement agreement. Number 14, consider resolution 2024-3161, authorizing the city manager to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement with Denton County for ambulance and fire protection services. And moving 20, consider resolution 2024-3160, rejecting all bids for the Pilot and Old Park Gatehouse project. And number 21, consider resolution 2024-3162, rejecting the bid for dredging of Quail Cove and Walmart retention-detention facilities project. And number 23, consider resolution 2024-3164, authorizing execution of a police substation hosting agreement with MP Shops at Highland Village LLC. Council, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as read.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second, council?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. All right, council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Carry 7-0. And we're going to move on to, oh, wait. Timeout. We got to go back, because the consent agenda went on to the second page. We left off two items. We left off number 15 and 16. I only read through 14, so let's redo that. Kevin? You want me to redo all of it, or just add to the consent?
Add to the two items.
Okay. So council, I am so sorry. I didn't flip the page and see that number 15 is also on the consent agenda. Consider resolution 2024-3165, authorizing a contract for construction services with Precise Fencing LLC for Unity Park Pickleball Fencing Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the interlocal purchasing system. And number 16, receive budget reports for period ending September 30th, 2024. Now can I have a motion for items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 20, 21, and 23?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as re-read.
Thank you.
I second.
And we're going to have a second. Thank you so much. All right, council, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. So I was dared to try to get this meeting in in 17 minutes, because that seems to be the record. Okay? That's what happens whenever you try to do that. Don't rush things. Action agenda, we did not meet in closed session, so we are going to move to number 18. Somebody tell me if I'm right. Consider ordinance 2024-1321, adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, and this will be the first of two reads. Mr. Heeran.
Mayor, council, as discussed just a little bit ago, I'll just do a brief recap. We're adding $50,000 to current funding of $75,000 for splash pad improvements. And then item two is with the cancellation of Celebrate Highland Village last year, the fireworks display was repurposed to the Fallen Officers event. However, that crossed the fiscal year, so we're re-appropriating the remainder of that budgeted money to this budget year.
So that was the explanation for 18 and 19, correct? Is that, or no, that's for 18?
That will address 19, but to award that, yes.
All right, council. Yes?
Let's make a motion.
Thank you, sir.
I can make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-1321 with the budget amendments for fiscal '24, '25, first of two reads.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Brian?
Second.
Mr. Berenzer? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. Number 19, consider resolution 2024-3159, authorizing a contract for equipment and construction services with Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks for the Splash Pad Features Upgrade Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the local government purchasing cooperative by board. Well, you're not Phil.
No, I'm Brian.
You're Brian.
I'm the assistant director with Parks and Rec, for those of you who haven't met. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on the splash pad project. I think we actually had a couple slides. I don't know if they're going to, they had those available. There it is. So this project is going to add some new vertical features to the splash pad. Right now, all of the features are level, and we wanted to make it a little more interesting and put in some vertical features above ground, and that's just to enhance the experience for the kids and more play opportunities. The cost of this project is $126,787.14, and that's, of course, already been approved through the budget process, as Ken mentioned, with that budget amendment.
Did we, can I ask you a quick, did we see the vertical?
It's coming on, coming up.
Okay.
There'll be, we have two areas in the splash pad that will be addressed. We have a large area at the lower level of the splash pad and the tot area at the top. At the lower area, we'll have a five-arm feature with dump buckets that fill in dump water, and also some misters in that area. And then we'll have three smaller features in the tot area on the upper level of the splash pad. And these are the features. This is what they'll look like, the ones in the tot area for the little kids, and it's kind of more their size, and it'll be lots of fun for the kids, something new. And then these are the type of features we'll have in the large area at the bottom of the splash pad. So it'll add some dump buckets and some sprays. And this is a map that'll show, give you an idea where those features will be located. You can see at the top of the map, that's the tot area with the three features there, and then at the bottom, the large area with the sprays and the dump buckets. And then just another, another list of those items and where they'll be on the maps. Okay. And we're just asking council tonight if they can approve us to enter into a construction agreement with Craftsman for the project.
Council, does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Start and completion. Will we be open by Memorial Day?
Yes, they've told me that they can have it done before our opening this year.
Okay.
Mr. Berenzer?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
This was in combination of last year's budget, this year's budget that we've combined to accomplish this now. Have the cost been verified, and there's no increases to the cost?
Yes, the costs, the costs we noted in this presentation, that's the cost, yes.
Okay. It's been verified. They haven't called up for any particular reason since we first bid it?
They had a, our original budget was $125,000. The proposal, the most recent proposal was about $1,700 higher than that, just because of the cost of the bonds and some of that. But yeah, that's the exact price now.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, anybody else have any questions? Okay. We'll enter, Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution 2024-3159, authorizing a contract for equipment and construction services with Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks for the Splash Pad Features Upgrade Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the local government purchasing cooperative by board.
Perfect. Council, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. All right, council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. 7-0. Pass the 7-0. Okay. We moved 20 and 21 to consent. So number 22, consider resolution 2024-3163, authorizing the purchase of excavation equipment from United AG and Turf through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with Texas Local Government Purchasing Cooperative and Kirby Smith Machinery through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with Sourcewell. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, mayor, council. During the budget process, our fireworks fleet works with all departments and divisions on their equipment replacement needs. I've already brought forth one package two council meetings ago, and this is our second package, should be the final package. So this would also be purchased under the tax note that was authorized August 27th, 2024. This package is going to purchase two tractors for the Parks Department and one Greedall hydraulic excavator for streets and drainage, and then out of the, that's out of the tax note, and then out of the utility fund would be the mini excavator. And if we remember back during the budget presentations, Parks had a mini excavator in a supplemental package, which got denied. Therefore, utilities brought forward that we could purchase a new one, take our existing two-year-old mini excavator and hand it down to Parks and Rec, and they'll get several years of good use out of it.
Okay. Council, does anybody have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we can, we approve item 22, consider resolution 2024-3163, authorizing the purchase of excavation equipment from United AG and Turf through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with Texas Local Government Purchasing Cooperative and Kirby Smith Machinery through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with Sourcewell.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Feaster?
Did Rhonda?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, let Rhonda have it.
Oh, I can have it. Oh, thanks.
Don't flip a coin. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, carry 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Kristin. All right, and we moved 23 to consent. So status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Council, does anybody have anything?
Mayor has something.
Yes.
We had discussed it before in regards to the traffic study on Barnett and the speed limits for the school zones, and with the LISD decision last night and the previous traffic control, or the previous traffic study they did, is there a potential that we request a new study done for the traffic light at Barnett? And since they seemed so hesitant to push it through the last time, if that doesn't go through, a possibility of decreasing the school zone's speed limit from 30 down to 20 miles per hour and extending it east by at least 100 yards to prepare for the new traffic that will be coming to and from that road.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cox. I think, perfect, got that? Mr. Feaster? Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll do some research on it.
Okay, thank you. You have your light on?
Yes, I did. Mr. Stevens, I did ask you earlier this evening about this, but can you just kind of explain for the board and what's happening on the property on 2499, just north of the Walmart and the detention basin there?
Sure, I'll start. I'll probably sketch out some details. As you know, the apartment hiking bike club goes by that area we're talking about, and a couple of years ago, the Parks Department, Lakeside Park, did the trimming of the trees in the park and raked up the can of the canopy, which there were safety reasons for that, as well as cleaning out the underbrush and allowing some of those trees in there to recover the vines and the eel and drone, to really open the canopy up. So that's a significant way to do it, is there's also some other benefits, I know, such as drainage, mosquito abatement, things like that.
Correct. Thanks, Paul. That wooded area was part of the Walmart 380 agreement, the pond in the wooded area. And when Walmart 380 agreement, I don't know if it failed, or it got dismissed at that time. They deeded the pond and the wooded area over to the city, and we accepted it. Over the years, we have cleared many large postokes out of that wooded area due to disease. They're just dying, and we take them out, we drop them in place, and the undergrowth's just started growing and just becoming so thick that it was not manageable. Some of the undergrowth vegetation was causing ponding in there, so we decided to, we identified it, along with the dredging project, to dredge the pond, start maintaining that area. If you remember, there was a lot of, I call them hedgerow trees that grew up in the fence, perimeter fence that surrounded the pond, that we took out and started to maintain that. All the trees that were entwined in that fence, basically ruining a city asset, we took them out, we fixed the fence, we put it all back. It looks great. It's being maintained. So now we move over to the thicker forest area. We got with it. We got with an arborist, we dredge through the wooded area, and they determine that they can make that a nice urban forest area, and make it start being healthy. So we had them bring in a forestry chipper, and they are going through clearing the underbrush, and they're not done yet by any means. This is a two-year, possibly a three-year process, you have to clear it, and then they'll come in and they'll lift up a browse line to about 10-foot, and then, you know, it'll have to grow and sit for about a year or two, and then it'll be a really nice environment in there for birds, animals, small animals, and be much like the Lakeside Park tree clearing that they did. So it has, it has twofold. What Paul was speaking to is called a SEPTED program, it's called Prime Prevention Through Environmental Design, and it's a national program that clears heavily wooded areas, so our police departments can easily see in and through heavily wooded areas for crime, mischief, and what have you. Another benefit is that was basically a tinderbox waiting to dry up and go up in flames, so with us clearing it out and maintaining it and managing it, it should not be a fire hazard in the future.
One follow-up, is anything planned across 2499 on the Village Park side?
The Village Park side is a park, the side that we're on right now is not a park, it's just a drainage area, so that'd be a Parks and Rec question, I could defer. I'll defer to Phil.
Thank you, Scott. So we are looking at every park, and we actually, every couple of years, tag, tag-team with the police department, and we go look at each park and see where we can apply SEPTED initiatives, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, like you said. So the Village Park hasn't been identified as a high priority like Lakeside, there was some criminal activity at Lakeside and some other things that needed to be addressed, so as we thinned it out, that went away. So Village Park right now, we're not having any issues, but it doesn't mean that we should go through there and start doing, applying the same principles that we do at the other parks, and we will be looking at that in the future. Thank you.
Lakeside Park looks really nice, so I really like what, whoever did that, they did a good job.
It was us.
They did a good job, and I appreciate that, so, okay, anybody else? Oh, Scott, you have?
Just another note, we did find and took down two encampments inside the wooded area, so.
All right. So you got any follow-ups, anything? Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, council, anybody else have anything? Okay, well, I would just like to tell all of you on the dais, and all the people in the audience and watching, this is our last meeting for the year, and we will come back January the 14th, I believe, so to all of you and your families, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we are adjourned at 7:55.